Sitting behind that, there were a couple that came up and talked to us. Two of them.
Harry's been a good word.
I don't know what the good word is. I'll bring something up there.
Something.
They was.
It started with board meetings here that we like.
We're gonna have to look at somewhere back.
You would all rise. Again, everyone of our board meetings with prayer and the pledge this evening. Alderman Harry Williams is gonna lead us in prayer. And Alderman Jared Crane is gonna lead us in the pledge. Good.
Aspire his please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings you've given us. Oh, we thank you for our community in our town. Thank you for those that have came tonight to be here to hear the business of the city. Oh, we thank you for our first responders here around the world who protect us, our fire, our police, Lord, our military, continue to watch over them. Be with us tonight to make decisions for the city that we look to you for our guidance and our direction. Once again, thank you for the many blessings as you bestowed upon Brandon. Forgive us of our sins. Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. All right. Get these cough drops out of my pocket.
I might need.
Another one I'm gonna need. Anybody else need a cough drop?
Hey, I don't know. Thank you, buddy.
All right. Hope everyone is healthy. Blue's going around and no telling what other kind of bugs. So let's be safe. All right. Uh, is Mandy was on the agenda tonight? Is Mandy here? I don't see Mandy anywhere. All right, we'll go back and skip over there. Is anyone else here tonight that would like to make public comment before the board? All right, board, I have one thing. We had an MPO meeting. I like to bring you these from time to time just to educate you. So this was the agenda. And this was the projects around the three counties that are listed in there. You can see some of the progress beginning on some of those. It's good for reference to look at Rankin versus Madison and Madison versus Heinz and back around. And we need to continue to work last go around for funding. That was sixteen million dollars that came out. Uh, I think seventy-two percent of that money went to Madison County. So Rankin County, we need to up our game a little bit more. All right. That being said, we'll move on through the agenda. Like a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of February third, twenty twenty-five. Motion by Mr. Sharon Romack, second by Mr. Chris Vincent. Any question on those? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. All right, I'm gonna take all five of these together. I'll break them out and talk about them as we go. Uh, consideration to authorize mayor to sign an environmental letter that's necessary for the implementation of the community development block grant on Emerald Sewer Extension Project. That is off of North Street, uh, between, between the interstate and Highway eighty. This is about the third time we've tried this, but I believe it's gonna be successful this time. One of the reasons why this was important, board, there's a sewer lift station there at the bottom of the hill, and this would also improve and get rid of that lift station. That's one less maintenance headache we have there. Number two, consideration to contract with MTR Racing Timing Services for the Brandon Jubilee five K walk and ten K on May the third, twenty twenty-five. That's coming up for Jubilee Days Saturday morning. Uh, number three, consideration to accept an amended permanent roadway easement right of way and authorization for the mayor to execute same. Uh, some of the board members will remember this audience. This was an idea born almost ten years ago, and it's taken this that long to get this roadway down. So Mr. Baker, I understand the Rankin County School System voted on that, uh, their last meeting, and we're good to go on that? All right, so we will be able to construct a road from North Street, which creates another way out of downtown that goes through North Street, past the new courthouse. Uh, anytime there's an accident in downtown, it gets very constricted as to getting vehicles around. So that'll give us another access route in and out of downtown area. So we looked forward to getting started on that. We've got one house that we need to, uh, demolish and begin to do a lot of tree work at the bottom of the hill, but we'll get on that board. Point in that is sometimes you just keep working on things where it doesn't matter if it takes six months or six years, you just don't stop working on them. Number four, consideration to approve a settlement offer from Magic of Lights for November twenty-second, twenty twenty-four through January five, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, two hundred forty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. And authorize mayor to execute same. Board, I have that in front of you. Uh, settlement, we had a Zoom call late last week. Behind that also, board, I wanted to show, share you their calculation of the value of the media, uh, that we got through that process, which they valued at a hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred eighty-five dollars. And I wanted both of those to be in the minutes. Uh, here, Lou, I think I got one. You got one? Okay. Uh, which is, you know, that's where the value to the community is at, not only enjoying the Christmas lights, but also as a family event annually, but also the value we get for advertising for the city of Brandon, which is a wonderful thing.
Referring to that as the contract settlement. That's what it is.
That's what it is. In essence, that's what it is. All right. Number five, consideration to approve WJTV, your hometown to come back to Brandon for the Cruderoo Parade on Friday, February twenty-eighth, in the amount of two thousand dollars. Board, this came late, uh, added on the agenda today. But this is the third time WJTV's been in here. Here, Lou, I think I was shy one. But this is, uh, two thousand dollars, and they'll come back, uh, promote us on, uh, the parade downtown Brandon, and I think that's a reasonable offer for two thousand dollars to, to get that advertisement from WJTV and move on there. So I'd like to put that for you. Any thoughts or conversations on that? So there's five items, board.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Harry Williams, second by Mr. David Ferris. Any further conversation or question on any of those items? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. Ms. Mary Ann. I'll get you out of here, board. Don't worry about it. I'll drag you out. Check and see if that microphone's on, please.
Okay, now it is.
More better.
May I take all these together?
Yes, please.
Consideration to approve professional services agreements for the purposes of promoting tourism in accordance with House Bill fifteen twenty-one and other law form related purposes. Authorize the mayor to execute the same and approve payment of all show related expenditures. The Gavin Adcock Contract, Brandon, twenty twenty-five, and the Rick Springfield Four-Band DPM eighties tour. Number two, consideration to approve Brandon Amphitheater sponsorship agreements for the twenty twenty-five concert season and authorize the mayor to execute the same for the following sponsors, Sea Spire and Mosquito Authority. Number three, consideration to approve a quote to replace a concrete area at the Kennedy Farms Road Fire Station Driveway Repair Project to MJ Farms, Inc., in the amount of twenty-four thousand, nine hundred eighty dollars, and to approve for the finance director to make all of the necessary budget amendments. Number four, consideration to approve two rental agreements between the City of Brandon and RJ Young for copiers on state contract located in the City Clerk's Office and Accounting Office and authorize the mayor to execute the same. Number five, consideration to approve a contract with the Rankin County Election Commissioners and authorize the mayor to execute the same. Number six, consideration to approve budget amendments to the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget and authorize publication of the same. Number seven, presentation of the quarterly reports for the quarter ending December twenty twenty-four as filed with the State of Mississippi Department of Finance and Administration. There's two Senate bills and two House bills, and then the last one is the most. Number eight, consideration to approve the docket of claims for February the eighteenth and Fox Everett Claims released on February the tenth.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Mary Ann. Is there a motion to approve those eight items? Motion by Mr. Lou Coker. Second, Mr. Junior Crane. Any question on any item? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you. All right. Ms. Georgiana, hang on just a second. I see Ms. Mandy's in the room. Ms. Mandy, I'm gonna get you, get you to come on up to the microphone, please. Come on up. All right. Okay. Come on, Ms. Georgiana. I don't know if that mic. Put that microphone on.
Here we go.
There we go.
So we're starting with number three, continuation of the discussion regarding going cashless at the Brandon Amphitheater.
All right. Jay, how you doing? Thank you for coming tonight.
Appreciate you having me. Um, I know there's been, you know, uh, since our last, uh, talk about this and going cashless, there's been some, um, concerns about credit card fees and things like that. So we just want to make it clear that ECI does not charge credit card fees. We do not pass that on to the consumer. We never have, and we do not intend to do that, especially with that being the only option. Uh, it's not ethical to then oppose a fee to do that. That's a cost of doing business that we take on ourselves. So, um, just wanted to make sure that that was clear so that can be passed on, um, to those who do have concerns about that. And if anybody had any other questions about that, I'd be happy to, to answer those.
I know I've had questions from discussions off-center with some of the board members. Board, y'all wanna say anything about, uh, going cashless at the amphitheater? Do you wanna continue going down that route? Do you have any modifications? You know, you gonna share anything? Got any thoughts? It's a good idea.
What do we need to do to move forward?
You already have. Or, you know, or do you wanna modify what you do? Yeah, that's right. So it's just a question of do you wanna modify that? You wanna stay the course or what? All right. The fee, straightening that out?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Appreciate you coming tonight. Just clarify that. You know, best, best that comes from you and not from me or a board member. It needs to come from you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you being here. Good luck on that basketball game tonight.
Thank you.
Consideration to approve the facility rental agreement as shown at the request of the Events Department. Consideration to continue the professional service agreements for the following vendors at the Brandon Amphitheater, City Hall Live, and Private Rentals for the twenty twenty-five season and authorize the mayor to execute the same. Academic Technologies, Elcon, JL Roberts Mechanical, RF Outdoor, Roderick Kane, Quan, sorry, and Jana King. And then last, reports and recommendations from CLO Agency regarding the plan for advertising for the Brandon Jubilee Days, report on social media from the month of May, January twenty-five, discussion of implementation and activation of the city's new website.
Thank you, Ms. George. So we're just gonna take one and two. Let's go ahead and vote on those and get those out of the way, Mr. Baker. One and two. That's correct. Yeah. All right, so. I'll slow down. So can we get a motion to approve, uh, one and two under Events? Motion by Mr. Sharon Romack, second by Mr. Chris Vincent. Any question on those? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. All right. Reason why I wanted to wait on number four is because we have folks here with CLO who are gonna bring you a lot more information, uh, and you're gonna have it in front of you. Please make sure your screens are working. Uh, there are actually some handouts in front of you that are not what you're seeing on the screen, and now I'm gonna run over. So I'm just kinda like trying to lay the groundwork for you good folks. You're doing great work. I'm gonna abbreviate this very quickly to say you got a, a report in front of you that I, that we printed off on social media and how they're tracking that. We can look at that later. Just wanna give you a synopsis of that. They can talk about that. Uh, wanna talk about Jubilee Days and what we can do to promote that from advertising. We'll need you to vote on that plan. And then lastly is for them to spend a few minutes talking about the work that's been done on the new website and when they wanna go active with that. That summarize it pretty good for you?
Very good job. I'll let you finish if you'd like.
The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. My name's Rick Looser. I'm the CFO of the CLO Agency, and we have actually been working with y'all since before the amphitheater. Uh, I felt pressured because we were doing that work to buy two of the box seats. I had a little WorldCom money left over. Uh, no, I, it's the best investment I've made as far as, uh, being able to bring folks. Now, it's just a great event and a great place to have concerts. Y'all have done a great job with that, a lot of good foresight. You've got in front of you the analytics from, I believe, January, and I am not going to, nor do I have the capacity to take you through each one of those charts. Sabrina does, but I don't. So that's why I'm just gonna say, uh, here's the big picture of what you're looking at. I've been in this business for forty years, little over forty years. Fifteen years ago, if a client asked me how we do, and I would say, hey, you know, I've got a bunch of people that said they saw that full-page ad in the Clarion Ledger Sunday, and they all loved it. And that was kind of how we did. Today, there's not full-page ads in the Clarion Ledger, and there's barely a Clarion Ledger out there. But today, everything we do is measured. So what the report you have in front of you takes you through everything we've done for you all, whether it's, uh, website, whether it's social media, the clicks. We can tell you where they clicked in on, uh, the website. We can tell you at what point they clicked, how many clicks, when they left the website, if that's a pattern, what we need to do about that. So all the things you can have there, and we do have clients that we go over this, and it's an hour, an hour and a half meeting of every single chart on there. I promise you, we're not gonna do that right now. I do want you to look at it in the comfort of your own office or home, and we will come back at any time to a smaller group where other people don't have business, and we will go over everything in there for you if you'd like us to, and explain the relevance, uh, what's good and what's bad, and we measured against all the other things we've done on a month-to-month basis. Uh, the other thing we've got before you tonight is the Jubilee Days promotion. We have put together a plan and understand that what we've put together is, uh, we're not gonna benefit one way or another from this. We already had this in our scope of work. So what we're presenting for you all tonight is just the out-of-pocket cost for the advertising. We do a number of, uh, events throughout the life of the agency over the last forty years, and some of those have been as little as five thousand dollars for a weekend event up to the Sanderson Farms Championship, which is a million dollars spent over nine months to promote it. Uh, we're, we're coming right below that for this. Uh, so Sabrina will go over all that with you because, um, she put it all together. She's a better presenter. Uh, she's smarter and she's prettier. Uh, and for those of you who know my wife and my partner, you'll understand that that's the role I play quite well and have played for thirty-seven years now. So I'm gonna let Sabrina kinda take you through the PowerPoint, and she'll point out the highlights of that. And again, we can come back to the granular details at whatever time you all would like, if you would like.
Hey, everybody. My name is Sabrina Turner. I'm Director of Brand Strategy at the CLO Agency. And just to kind of kick things off, brief overview, um, I did see that the Jubilee Juke is now going to be a five K walk, which I have it as a three K, so I will certainly update that in my files. Um, but it's basically Thursday through, through Saturday, May first through third, we're going to have a vendor market, the midway, um, the ten K run, five K walk, a Parks and Recreation Baseball Tournament, and then also the Brandon Amphitheater Concerts, which are Gavin Adcock and Allison Kraus. From there, I'll show you kind of a preview of how we're gonna be promoting these two events. We've got the overall Jubilee Days flyer that we'll be doing. Of course, it's not finalized yet. Just wanted to give you guys kind of that preview look. And then we also have the new look for the Jubilee Juke Trail Run here as well. Moving into our paid advertising, typically whenever we do paid advertising for events, we do recommend doing a diversified approach, which basically means, um, spreading your money out across multiple different platforms. So we've got social media, outdoor, television, radio, and digital display to look at here today. For social media, which is gonna be a really heavy lift for us, um, on the social media side, it's actually a really successful platform. I'm sure you guys, uh, Rick didn't get a chance to mention, but the best of the best videos that we've been covering of all of the businesses across Brandon, those have been really successful on social media. Um, and we have been putting a little bit of the advertising money that we had set aside for the overall budget for the year on those videos. But, um, for social media advertising for the Jubilee Days, uh, events, we have a fifteen hundred dollar budget, um, of what that will take, and that will be for event page promotions, which we already have those event pages created. You can see that on social media now. Um, and then promoting the event flyer ads and then retargeting, um, our targeting audience for all of our advertising is gonna be a ninety-mile radius surrounding Brandon. Um, so all of that will cover what we need in order to promote that for March through the event weekend. Then from there, we also have a six thousand dollar estimate for outdoor advertising, and this includes eight rotating billboards for eight weeks. It's gonna give us the most diversified approach. Um, I'm sure everyone knows that billboard advertising is pretty stagnant, but with this rotating package, we're able to rotate all across, um, the surrounding areas for Brandon. Of course, we're doing that ninety-mile radius approach. Um, and then we also get one interstate billboard. That one is the exception. It is stagnant, but the interstate billboard is highly trafficked, and it's gonna deliver the most impressions there. And then you also can see a, uh, preview of what that billboard ad is gonna look like. For television, um, we have received a six thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollar package estimate from WLBT. Um, that's a really good package. WLBT has been a great partner for Magic of Lights, so we went back to them to see what they could offer us there. Um, around thirty-eight spots for three hundred and fifty thousand impressions online for digital ads as well, so a great package. And then also they're offering an added bonus for one segment feature on Studio Three to talk about Jubilee Days. If we do choose to offer a partnership opportunity, which is one of the other pieces of paper you have in front of you, um, sponsorship packages for the Jubilee Juke. Uh, there are different levels there of sponsorship opportunities that we can offer, um, for businesses to get involved. I didn't wanna create a sponsorship package for Jubilee Days as a whole because it is the city event. Um, and so I thought it was a good idea to create a sponsorship package for the event inside of Jubilee Days. So, uh, by giving WLBT the opportunity to partner with us, we can get a trade value of five thousand dollars, um, which gives us extra commercials, extra promotions on WLBT. You can see that listed out in front of you, so that's just an option for an additional, uh, package there with them. For radio, our estimate is thirty-four hundred for Supertalk, um, and that does include the Rebecca Turner Show doing a live broadcast from the event on Friday at Jubilee Days. Typically, whenever we have Supertalk come and set up, it's a really big event. Everybody wants to go and see the live broadcast, take pictures, um, a really good, good way to get that extra coverage. Then along with that, we also get thirty thirty-second commercials, um, and that timeline for those commercials would be the month of April. An additional radio package is with the radio people. Uh, for our two concerts with, um, Gavin Adcock and Allison Kraus, we do have a recommendation of going with country for thirty-second commercial spots and then also urban to kind of expand outside of the Brandon area. Um, so a total of a hundred and sixty-five thirty-second commercial spots for three thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. And again, we can either accept whatever combination of these advertising you guys, these advertising packages you guys wanna do or all of it. Don't feel like you're stuck with everything that I'm recommending. Just wanted to throw that out there. Um, for digital, we also have a location-based pre-roll video. Um, we're working on a video right now promoting Jubilee Days, um, and it would be a, uh, thirty-second spot, and that would be retargeted within a ninety-mile radius, very similar to social media. It's just going to pop up on popular websites that are within our target audience, um, for a hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and forty-seven total impressions, which is great for that time period. Uh, and that does come in at around four thousand dollars. So the total advertising spend that we're recommending is twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty, um, if you accept this package as it is right now. I'm happy to make any edits that we need necessary. I'm not sure what the total budget is for advertising for this event, but do you wanna take a vote on that now before I go into the remainder, Mayor?
Let's get some conversation from the board.
Okay.
I, I wanna say that, uh, this is the first year out of three. We've, uh, been working with Live Nation, trying to get two shows at the amphitheater on Friday and a Saturday to complement the arcade, not the arcades, I don't know why that came out of my mouth, amusement rides and things like that. Uh, you know, to continue making this a, a family event. We were able to do that this year for the first time, and, you know, it's kind of that P.T. Barnum thing, gotta promote or it's not gonna, you know, do half what you want to do. So I think we all agree that we want it bigger and better. So the question before you, board, is how much bigger and better do you want it to be? So, uh, this is their recommendation. Like I said, we can slice and dice and reduce this down. You can come up with a lump sum, uh, amount that you feel comfortable with, uh, and we can then break that out among these categories. So it's kind of up for a little discussion and thought from you. That's possible. So his question was, look.
I, I was just looking at this. Is it a fair assessment to say that the cost, the estimated cost will be offset by the Jubilee Juke sponsorships that we're going to solicit?
Absolutely.
Okay. Now, some of that's in kind, but some of that's gonna be not in kind.
Right. And, and that's the plan. Um, I've spoken with Meredith at Main Street, and she said that there are several businesses that have already expressed interest in sponsorship, in sponsorship opportunities. So that's why we went with that route to kind of create that extra cash flow for you guys.
Will those be sponsorships that come back to the city or are they gonna go to Main Street?
No, they're back to the city. Meredith's just helping us with the event.
That's what I needed to know.
Okay. Is this something that could be paid for either two percent? Does that qualify for this?
As I recall, it's tourism. As I recall, it's tourism. So it does, to promote tourism. So it can be. The question, I think Mary Ann would say yes, is whether or not, you know, under the purpose of advertising, bringing favorable opportunities, possibilities of the city of Brandon, first finding that this mode of advertisement is in the best interest of the citizenry, it's a 1% of the assessed whatever. And I think altogether, we're not near that number on all the advertising that we've done. Is that correct? So we meet all the criteria for that.
Comments? Other thoughts? No more calls? All right. We have any observation or thought, board, of how far you want to promote Brandon? And I mean, if you're agreeable to doing that for the Cruderoo, which I think is great. You know, they've been here two other times and promoted the Christmas Parade, and another time for Hometown. That worked well for WJTV. And I think the Magic of Lights and WLBT has really worked well for us promoting Brandon. We see the value in that. And so if you want more, I think it's, we should take a shot at getting it. So I need some conversation.
I mean, even if we don't collect any advertisement, I mean, any sponsorships, that's worth it to me. And I believe we'll collect. I mean, knowing Main Street, what they do, and they'll get sponsorships.
Okay.
Will our website be up and running by the time this begins?
So our plan for the website is to have the website launched middle of March. We're still waiting on quite a bit of content, and I'll get into that at the end of this presentation. But yes, essentially, the website will be launched in time for promotion for Jubilee Days. But keep in mind also, the website's not really the main focal point for promotion at all when it comes to these kinds of events. Mostly social media and what people see mainstream media is going to be our focus for advertising.
I thought, because during that time, this is a great time to promote our new website.
Absolutely.
People want to know, where's the new website?
Yes.
And she's about to speak to that. You'll see that in just a moment.
So just make sure that we're all on the same page with this. So this recommendation to do this, y'all would still be overseeing the advertising and all of that?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to do the cost they have and make the funds out of 2% if possible.
Well, it will be out of 2%. That doesn't mean to be impossible. You don't have to put that, that's a fact.
I'd like to do the whole, total cost out of 2%.
It's so far ahead of schedule, doing what it's supposed to do, which is paying for the amphitheater and tourism. Now, we call it 2% fund, but I call it tourism fund, and it's doing exactly what it's designed to do. Audience, kind of spooky thoughts. I've shared this with Sabrina, but we're encroaching on a time since Jennifer's in here. They get over 100,000 for youth sports in here this year. We're bumping 300,000 people a year coming into Brandon for a variety of things. And we're really, we're able to pay our public safety people more, fixing to swear some in tonight. I know it's kind of bizarre when you look at it in this term, but 52% of a police officer's salary is actually coming from tourism, from the amphitheater, from youth sports, from parades, and all the other things that we're doing. So I fall into the category of doing more, not less. So thanks for that, Harry. So we got a motion by Harry Williams, and a second by Mr. Chris Vincent to go forward with this, this recommendation from CLO for Jubilee Days.
That's correct.
All right. Any further discussion or question? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board.
Awesome. Okay. So moving on to the website, a few things. This is our new landing page for the website, and of course, you also have another sheet in front of you that has a QR code and a login and a password for the board members. You guys can get on, click around, see what it looks like on your phones, and there's also a link if you want to plug it into your desktop at home. This is just the demo version of the site, basically where we're housing it and building it. You'll notice that there are a few sections that are still missing, and we're working on getting that content now. One of the main things that we wanted to focus on in this website was making it easy to navigate and then also visually appealing. So you'll see here on the landing page focuses on driving people to certain areas of the website that are highly trafficked, which is pay utilities online, work requests. We are going to have an ongoing projects tab where we will be able to feature any public works projects, and also community development projects that are going on. We have the permits and licenses for people who are looking for new business opportunities here locally, and then board meetings and minutes also. So all of those are quick links for people to easily get. The goal with any website is you want it to be two clicks at most for people to find what they really need. So that's what we've tried to keep in mind while building this site. The top navigation is really centered upon live and play, business, government, and city services. And that's what we've kind of condensed everything that lives on the existing site to, to really organize it. Just brief pictures of what we've got going on here. So in the live and play section, you'll see that we have a highlight for the Brandon Amphitheater since that is such a local attraction when it comes to tourism. Then we also have things to do. We have the annual events calendar where we're putting all of the events. You can see those events are live right there on the left of your screen. We have the upcoming events that are rolling on through the calendar, and those are repetitive every year. We'll update the dates, so on, so forth. It's very easy to see what all is coming up in the city of Brandon. Then we also have an About Brandon section where we will cover the history of Brandon, history of cross gates, and historic preservation, working on gathering all of that content as we speak. And then we also have community with the public library and the civic ready alert system. All of those are already set up. Then you can see here, the Experience Brandon page, this is the live and play section's kind of main highlight, where we will talk about shopping, restaurants. The website links out directly to Parks and Recreation. They have a great website, so we thought, we're not going to try to recreate it, we're just going to drive people to it. Same thing goes with the Brandon Amphitheater, easy navigation there for people to get to what they need to know. We also have a slideshow on the website that talks about all of the different events happening in the city of Brandon. Again, this is a presentation, so it's not live and you can't see it, but that slideshow filters through all of the existing events. That's Jubilee Days, Magic of Lights, Freedom Fest, you name it, it's on there with a little brief description, and then also the dates. Under the business section, this is where we will highlight all of the economic development, community development type things. We also have our best of the best videos spotlighted here for some community development type social media posts that we've put out, just really trying to focus on driving awareness of the brand, and then also awareness of our social media channels as well. And then this is going to be our business section. We'll build out all of this content once we receive the economic development stuff. Really focusing heavily on visuals, as you can see. And then we have your pages, which I included just for you guys, with the board meetings, the live stream minutes and agendas, very easy to navigate, and all of the documents on the website that exist currently, all of the, one that's currently live, all of those documents are not housed in one singular location. And that's also something that we've tried to focus on on this new site, is we actually have a dedicated documents and forums page where all PDFs will be kept, and then the link from each individual page on the website where they exist actually links you to that documents and forums page. So that makes for easy updates down the road. Whenever you guys are trying to update PDFs, you won't have to go through and update them in three different places. It's one place, go to documents and forums, update that one PDF, and then it's updated across the entire site. So you don't have confusion when documents go out of, out of date and are no longer able to be used. So I think that's a really good feature to point out. Then we also have the board map on here as well for that Board of Alderman page. Police Department. I don't believe this is the correct photo, but we will get correct photos from you. You're on my list to contact. So we have a brief overview of everything for the Police Department, for all of the departments really under City Services. And then here's that documents and forums page that I mentioned. And then I have a report here of what all we're waiting on. We're waiting on that community development information, fire department content, the MDA retirement community content. We want to make sure that we tie that messaging in from MDA with what exactly they want us to say, since we are deemed a retirement community. And then also finalizing those PDFs for 2025, that's, that's a little bit of a process. So scheduling photos with Police Department, you are on my list. So we will have all of that done with the hope of launching in the middle of March, as long as we get the content we need.
Will you, can I, I guess you'll send out something about links and stuff, like we have, all of our code is on Unicode online, so a link in the website to go to the code ordinances?
Oh, the ordinances.
Right. They're all online.
Right.
And so just doing that. And also, under the board minutes, board agendas and minutes, we, just make a note, needs to include notices too, from time to time.
Okay.
We're having to put out a notice, and we've got to upload it pretty quick, and so the public needs to be able to find it somewhere.
Absolutely. And we, I didn't mention this, but we do have a news section where we also put all of that information. So we put any of the boil water notices or any notices that you guys send to us, we put that in the news section so that it filters to the top on that homepage as well.
Okay. Will there be like a streamer for like hot stuff, like stuff like boil notices, like if you come to the website?
Yes, absolutely. And we do also share all of that on social media too. Well, that's everything that I have.
Any questions, comments?
Yeah, just a quick question. Who is going to be their contact for updates to this page through the city?
Two, two answers to that. One, we put a hot button or a fuse on this thing, where if they haven't heard from somebody in 90 days, we're going after them. In other words, they're coming at us looking for new content, straightening it out. So we're going to be working on it. It's not going to sit there idle for six months or a year, and you go, well, what's happened over here? They're going to be actively chasing us, saying, Sam, what you got new you need to put on here? Carly, what's the latest on whatever? Right? Am I right?
Yes, absolutely. I will chase.
I didn't phrase that right. How did we say that when we met? Rick, I see you getting up.
No, I'm just, she's doing all the hard bit.
She's doing a great job, too.
My question was, who is their, they should have a direct contact here, like a Georgiana or a you or somebody to say, hey?
I am to the department heads, because that's where the police chief, fire chief, community development, city clerk, and public works is going to. So, you know, you've got duplicity there. Can't get the fire chief, you get me, and I get the deputy chief, kind of deal, right on that one. So we've got two of us to get in each department. Now, help? Okay.
So because of, we're over 20,000 now, whatever, when we call a special meeting, we have to notice it on the website if we have one. In addition to, will it be user-friendly where the clerk or somebody in the office will be able to upload that notice?
Absolutely. So we are utilizing WordPress and the updated version of WordPress. We can absolutely give someone easy access to make that addition, any addition that you need to sections like that. And then we can also go through a short training process to get them up to speed so that they can easily do that. But we are also updating those on the live website that exists now. So anything that you guys send us, we update the existing site, and then we also go ahead and put it on the site that we're working on so that it, it's already there.
So being a living document, though, I know you're in agreement. You know, quarterly, I would say, we'll ask, come over here and give us, give the board an update, give them feedback. There might be some snippet that gets lost that you need to hear from them or us. And I really appreciate you, I think you did very well tonight.
Thank you.
Exceptionally well.
Chair, I was just going to quickly say, as Sabrina pointed out, that I left it out of my presentation, the videos we're doing on business owners in Brandon are the most popular thing we have done, not just for y'all, but for several clients combined. So if you haven't seen those on social media, please go to them. The business owners are static, they're getting a lot of traffic, a lot of good things out there. And it fits what we want to do going forward, which is less words, more video, more storytelling, less reading, because that's just where we are today as a society. So that's kind of what we are, we've got several more of these to do, and we'll just keep looking for those type things that tell the story of Brandon, that person who goes in and spends 20 seconds digesting those little factoids.
Final question. So the QR code that the board has to get them in to peruse the whole site, all of that's working for them when they see that?
It is. And it's just, there's a pass and...
There's a password and a username.
And you have that, so you can, the public is somewhat locked out, but you get eyes, you can look at it on your desktop, look at it on your phone, look at it on your iPad, and begin to experience that.
Yeah, that's in real time. So that, and we just want y'all to look at that because the less folks that are looking around in there, the easier it is for us to code and do the things that we don't want anybody to mess up. So that's why.
All right.
Thank y'all. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Keep up the good work. All right, Ms. Carly. Good evening.
All right. It's okay if I take all three together?
All those, something's wrong.
Y'all don't know what to think, do you?
No, I really don't. We only have three items, and usually Carly, the audience has 23.
Y'all can thank the flu for that, no doubt.
All right. And you see the performance numbers in front of that? So, boy, we're finally getting there. It's just a process to getting it on the agenda ahead of time, so you've got time to study that. But I would always open it up with board members, you got any questions about any of these?
Yes.
Any of these numbers?
Any questions?
So you'd be ready to ask when we have a board. All right, go ahead, Ms. Carly.
Okay. Item number one, consideration to approve the following pay requests from Thornton Construction Company for the Cornerstone Grants Ferry Parkway Water Line Extension Project and authorized payment of the same. Pay request one is in the amount of $412,634.13, and pay request two is in the amount of $399,265.32. Item two, consideration to approve a professional services agreement with Cleo's Asphalt Paving for paving and asphalt repairs at the rates pursuant to the memo and authorize the mayor to execute the same. And number three, consideration to hire Robert Brent King as a Labor Three in the Public Works Department effective February 19th at the rate pursuant to the memo and pending completion of all other pre-employment requisites.
And got one read-in, board, number four. Mr. Baker, you want to take off on that, or you want me to add lib?
At all projects, there's a tree running and breathing wood from storms and dead tree removal on the right of the way.
All right. So, board, from the hur, from the tornado we had in Brandon in 2014, all the way to now, we've used Mike Ashley out of Raleigh to grind trees for us and make mulch. We've done that, I think, five times. Had to do it at the new soccer fields at Shallow Park, had to do it at Marquette Road, had to do a mountain of stuff bigger than this building after the tornado. And Mr. Baker opined back then that that was really a professional services agreement, because he's not bringing anything, not leaving anything, he's leaving our ground-up trees here. And he thought it was a good idea just at this point in time, just to see if there might be anybody else out there, since we're taking down so many dead trees off right away. I'm already beginning the next one. I see more to add to it, and I hope the numbers dwindle down. But when these trees get over there, board, I'd like to solicit quotes from people or bids from people and bring it to the board, and the same people that are reviewing the proposals from tree cutters that are taking it down, which is, what you frowning up for me at? No? So you're taking down trees, right? Jared, you've been on that, right?
Yes.
And Sharon, and who else? Who's the fourth, who's the third one?
David.
David, the three of you. So I'd like the three of you to do the same thing if we get more than one proposal. Mark?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the reason we're doing this is, is if there ever is any reimbursement by the federal government, if there's a declaration or whatever, if you show that you've done it in a competitive nature, it's a professional service, so you can do it through a professional service and move on, but if you show that you've obtained competitive quotes for it, you can, you're in a better position to seek reimbursement, that's kind of why we've always, kind of in this realm, we've done it on these, is try to get competitive quotes for it, uh, it's very difficult to get quotes for these things right now, we know that, because there's so many people, there's so many trees to be removed and there's just so many people to do it, and so, or to grind them, so, anyway, this is just a way to preserve, in, in the event money becomes available from some grant or through some declaration.
So, we'll create something and give it to you, three focuses of members of the board, and give, come back to the full board with a recommendation, if we get more than one, may just have one, but we'll see, we'll know if there's anybody else out there that might can satisfy that. Last thing I want to give you in public works is, uh, mailboxes in Sun Chase, uh, spoke to Matthew who couldn't be here tonight, they're supposed to be installing those new mailboxes that were hit by trucks, uh, in that street research project, supposed to begin installation Monday, so, that's a good thing, be glad to wrap that up, so please, stick that in your memory bank. All right, board, so we've got four things to, uh, vote on there, is there a motion to approve those four in public works?
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Lou Coker, second by Sharon Womack, any further conversation or question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr., you need one of these? Sharon? Good evening.
I've got four items, but I'm going to strike number four, we settled that offline. Can I take, uh, I'd like to take these individually, or, one by itself and then two and three bu, together, if possible.
All right, so we're going to take one alone. Go ahead.
All right, number one, public hearing and board action regarding case number twenty-five dash zero zero two, conditional use application from Carly Keys at seven-two-four South College Street, parcel number I eight F dash eight.
Sam, can you advise board as to whether all the prerequisites of the public hearing have been met?
They have.
Was the matter presented to the planning commission?
It was.
What was the recommendation of the planning commission?
It was a four to two vote to approve.
Okay, and did, were there any conditions or requirements on the board?
They were, they were concerned about the amount of parking, which I confirmed it matches our ordinance, one space per, per room in the house.
Okay, and did your department prepare a staff report in this matter?
We did.
Are you asking that the staff report, together with all attachments there too, and, uh, and documents and things be appended to this public hearing, to the minutes of this public hearing?
Yes, sir.
With regard to the application, can you generally describe the same for the board?
The applicant is requesting to operate an Airbnb or VRBO or approved equal type, um, rental at seven-two-four South College Street, and it's within the, an appropriate zoning district with a conditional use, which requires us to go before the planning commission and before you, where we look at parking and, um, general neighborhood and, um, potential traffic concerns, things like that, but, but none of those really apply here, it met the minimum sta, exceeded the minimum standards.
All right, uh, going to take a break from Sam's comments right now, is there anyone here who desires to speak in, having heard the general description of the application, is there anyone here who desires to speak in favor of or in opposition to the application? First, those in favor of, come on forward.
No, I'm not supposed to say your word, cupcake.
Good evening, board and mayor.
I love that.
Um, thank you for inviting me tonight, um, I just want to say I am thankful to provide, uh, great accommodations for visitors to the city of Brandon, uh, I love the city and I want people to come to the city, um, and great accommodations is what we need, and I'm, uh, thankful and grateful to, uh, provide that.
Awesome, if they have any question, if the board has any questions at the public hearing, they'll call you back.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who desires to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone here who desires to speak in opposition to the application? Is there anyone here who desires to make any particular public comment with regard to the application? Seeing none, Mr. Merritt asks that the public hearing be closed.
I might want to say it a little louder, I'm not sure they can hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Clear.
Is there anyone here who desires to make any particular comment with regard to the application? He's looking, I don't know, would you like to talk on this one?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Uh, I'm here, I live on College Street, next door to the bed breakfast is proposed.
It, it should be on.
It's on, sir.
Your name, sir, I'm sorry.
Is it on?
Yes, sir, what's your name?
Uh, my name's Ollie Garver, I live at seven-twenty South College Street, and there's a bed breakfast proposed next door to me, which is about fifteen feet from my property line, and I feel that will diminish the value of my home, and also, uh, I'm getting counter elderly, and I'm not looking forward to transit people in my neighborhood next door to me at any time, really, and I just want to go on record as being opposed to this bed and breakfast, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Garver. Is there anyone else here who desires to make any particular comment with regard to the, uh, pending application? Anybody? Okay, Mr. Merritt asks that the public hearing be closed.
All right, board, public hearing is closed, uh, when did the, uh, when did your group meet to discuss this, when was that meeting, planning commission?
Uh, last month.
Okay.
We have the third week of the month.
All right, just want to make sure it wasn't a long time ago, board, uh, questions for community development? Have a will of the board?
The staff recommendations, listen, Lindon or Willdon?
Yes, sir.
Sam, did you say it was four to two in favor? Did I misunderstand?
It was, yeah, that's right.
Okay, what was the two, what was the problem?
They didn't agree that the ordinance was clear, and Mr. Baker came to a previous meeting and explained our position and our, um, interpretation of the ordinance, that it's owner or tenant occupied, and so, he came and spoke at an earlier date regarding another, it was on Dave's Circle, I don't know if y'all remember that one, but there was a, another one there where we, basically, he and I communicated our position on it, and, um, there's a couple of, or there's really one member that does not agree with it, with the planning commission, and another one, after she voted, they, uh, they went back and said no.
Okay. All right, so is there a motion here, up or down, board? Motion to do what? Motion to do what? Got a motion by Alderman Crane to approve, and we got a second by Alderman Ferris, any further discussion, comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign?
Let me just be clear, Alderman Crane, you incorporated all of the matters of the staff report, made the findings that compliance with nine point seven point two under conditional use have been met, and that, um, the conditions and the staff recommendations are, are a condition and of the approval, and the applicant must adhere to those, is that correct? Thank you.
All right, on to two and three, Sam?
All right, two, consideration to approve the development review for Sullivan's Marketplace Case Number twenty-four dash zero three seven, we have a list of comments that are provided in the staff report, um, it's an extensive list, but they're working on them diligently, and we believe they'll have them addressed in the next few days, um, and they'll be ready to push dirt, pull permit once the concern, or, once our comments are addressed in the civil plans.
So, how do you want to approve the, the comments?
It's contingent to, you know, comments being addressed, contingent approval.
Was there anything in the packet that was supposed to have been included?
Uh, just a list of comments, did you not receive one?
I did not receive the packet.
Okay, now, I sent this...
Yeah, email you sent to us.
Yeah, I sent an email Saturday morning to y'all, morning. Sorry, I can get it to you.
All right.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve contingent on satisfactory, whatever, comments that...
Completion of the...
Completion of the comments that community development had.
Good, okay, we got a motion to approve, subject to the completion of, uh, any addressed issues and comments, got a motion, a second, Chris Benson, Lou Coker, any further question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Thank you, board. And now, number, or, three?
Number three, consideration to award PATH the ESCO project number twenty-four dash zero four four for the city of Brandon, y'all are familiar, we, uh, you all selected, or, selected a committee to select the best option, and, uh, after reviewing the information that was provided, um, the qualifications and similar work, similar projects, similar scope or larger, uh, PATH was selected as the most qualified to complete this project, or at least get started, I believe we have Mr. Watkins, I don't know if you want to say anything, speak to it.
Certainly can answer questions from the board, and I'd love to set expectations, so I'll pause for questions if you have any at this point.
Next step would be presentation of a contract?
Yes, sir, Mr. Baker, so, really a two-gate process, right, uh, the good news is, uh, projects of these size have a, a cap, are capital intensive, or come with a capital cost is a better way to put it, uh, and so, we have to go out and inventory mainly the streetlights, as well as look at other projects that could save the city utilities or operations cost, and so, Mr. Baker, I will present that, uh, contract to you, it's a fifty, sixty-thousand-dollar contract that, at the end of the development of this, presenting what the streetlight savings, any other capital projects that the board wishes to consider, you know, uh, guidance from Sam and his team, or the mayor, excuse me, uh, we get to in that process and the board decides to move forward with absolutely nothing, it's an opportunity for our team to recoup a little bit of our cost, it's a loss leader, um, on, on our project, and at that point of, or at that gate, we will present those projects to the board for consideration to move forward into the implementation or construction phase.
I don't have the no, I don't have the words right, what is ESCO, I don't remember.
Energy Services Company? That's our designation by the Mississippi Development Authority, per, per the statute.
And we're, we're declaring you our ener, Energy Services Corp. company...
Yes, sir.
Pursuant to the request for qualifications that we just went through.
Yes, sir.
And the next step, and I'm kind of saying this for the board's education too, and the next step is, is you kind of go out and see what you can do for us.
Correct.
And then you come back, before you do that, you give, you, the board enters into a contract that covers some of your time in case you don't go forward.
Correct.
And then if the board is inclined to do the things that you come back for, then you're, you serve as kind of the project manager to do that?
The project manager...
Contractor.
Yes, sir, all the, but, all one-stop shop, so we'll present those options, it'll be à la carte, uh, three to four months from now, and the board has all authority and all control to do as many or as little, uh, as you, as you wish to move forward on. That's the beauty of this process, is the, the board's control from beginning to end on the projects that you deem to be most valuable to the ongoing sustainability of the city.
Okay.
I'll get that over to Mr. Baker as soon as I can, for your review.
I've got what I need, Mayor, thank you.
All right.
Need, need board action.
Yes, no, we got questions?
So, so they do it in the board, and we pay for that, but we can reject it later? At what point?
You can reject, well, we will bring the cost to upgrade the streetlights, right, or any other infrastructure with the city that comes at a cost savings, right? At that point, you can reject doing all of those project recommendations, uh, that you wish, uh, or you can do one or any combination of the recommendations that our team brings forward.
But inventory would be our cost regardless of we...
It will, and it'll be your information data, all of, all of, all of that will be, will, uh, be retained by the city, uh, at the end of that process, the city at a minimum will have those projects, the return on investment analysis that comes with that, as well as the GIS data from all of the streetlights that our team inventories, of which is always a supplement to what Entergy has out there today.
Answer your question.
That was a roundabout way of getting there, I apologize. Any other questions?
All right, so is there a motion to approve this going forward?
A motion.
I think everybody's ready for that, all right, thinking about, uh, motion by Mr. Lou Coker, second by Mr. Jared Crane, any further comment or question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign?
Thank you, Mayor.
You, uh, helped me out one time, I wasn't writing fast enough, so, Mr. Baker, ask you a question, exactly who are you, you're a...
Energy Services Company, yes, sir. Awesome.
Thank you, appreciate you being here.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Sam, chief?
Good evening, I have two items, can I take them together?
Yes, sir.
All right, item number one, request permission to hire the following and set the rate of pay in accordance with the memo, number one, Jamarcus James is patrolman effective February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and Charles Coggins is a patrolman effective March third, twenty twenty-five, and item number two, request permission for Captain Brian Elwell, Officer Palmer Robbins, and Officer Brandon Allison to join the escort of the annual run for the wall on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Chief, is there a motion to approve those two requests?
Motion.
Motion by me, Sharon Womack, and Mr. Jared Crane, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign?
Thank you.
And, we gonna swear somebody in tonight?
Yes, sir.
He did, removed, struck out. Good evening, chief.
Good evening. I'm going to take all three of mine together, sir. Yes, sir. Item number one is request consideration to hire Mason Boyd as a trainee firefighter and set the rate of pay per the memo, he's working out of town right now, so he couldn't make it tonight, and hopefully, getting sworn in when he graduates the fire academy.
Okay.
Uh, item number two is request consideration to travel to Pensacola Beach, Florida, participate in the firefighter challenge, April eleventh to thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, for five firefighters, they want to go down there and be able to wear Brandon Fire Department t-shirts and stuff, and represent the city of Brandon, and, uh, it'd also be a good training event for them. Item number three is request consideration to increase the salary for Captain Travis Khan for his education incentive due to obtaining his associate's degree in applied science. I always like to see our guys get a higher education.
And a benchmark for it.
Definitely.
All right, uh, is there a motion to approve those three items for the fire department?
Yes.
Motion by me, Sharon Womack, second by Mr. David Ferris, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Chief, all right, board, we'll go ahead and take a vote here, I'll go in if executive session before, yeah, sure, sure.
Can I go back to the panel and say I'm worried about the lights?
Absolutely, and then I've got one more thing, since you said that.
Go ahead, Mr. Ferris. Uh, sixteen to ninety days, it takes us time to inventory each light, right, so we physically do that, uh, take a picture of that light, we, we, uh, write down or take in data for about twenty-five, what we call attributes, right, so, unique characteristics of each one of those, each one of the lights that's out there, and then our engine, in-house engineers design the new layout of LED lights, right, it's not just, let's go throw out a bunch of new ones, it's, they're based on the type of roadways that are out there, M-dot specifications on major roadways, et cetera.
So, this is for all the lights in the city of Brandon?
Yes.
So, sir, about Southern Pine?
Yes, sir, unfortunately, the Southern Pine lights don't fall under the Entergy tariff that was passed by the PSC three years ago, because they're a cooperative, uh, we've asked several times, because of the city of Florence, and, and on behalf of the city of Pearl, uh, of Southern Pine, if they'll be upgrading their streetlights, or if we could cooperate together in order to do that, and Southern Pine has let us know that they are taking on that endeavor here in the near future, so, great question, though.
All right, and, Ms. Mandy was here, lady, got a few minutes late, and she was supposed to have been at the front end, so come on down, Ms. Mandy. Glad you made it.
Thank you, yes, I am here to, um, speak to you on behalf of the Rankin County Chamber of Commerce, uh, my question is, is it a possibility to get an approval to be a vendor in the city parking lot, um, as we did last year for the Crateroo Festival?
Is that a vendor for beer, light wine, and alcohol?
Just for beer.
No.
And that was voted on last year, and we were allowed to do that last year.
So, why, why do we have to have a new ordinance if we do it? You're talking about like how y'all were set up last year?
Correct, and it was approved last year.
I mean, it might be something we need to discuss in executive session.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll add that to that, miss, all right.
Thank you.
All right, so, board, at this time, I've got some officers swearing in, uh, what I like to do is take a vote to go into executive session, and we've got a couple of topics to talk about in there.
Motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session.
To consider the need for being in executive session. Who said the second? Second motion, Chris Spencer. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign? To consider the need. So let's swear in these officers, and give you an opportunity to say hello to them, board.
Thank you.
I went through about a bag on the day. I didn't know I was gonna be able to keep my voice out there. So, and I'm telling you while we're talking, they are convinced, folks, that they're gonna have that building built in ten months or less. Sullivan's grocery. I just said whatever. They're mighty confident in that, which means you'll have a, potentially have a Christmas grand opener kind of deal. Jared? All right, we're on it. Mark?
Mayor, I want to announce there was one vote taken in executive session with regard to pending litigation. Also, Mayor, it's my understanding that there's an add-on to the agenda, and that is an ordinance, consideration to adopt an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city to include new section six dash ten point four regarding the sale of alcoholic beverages by temporary, by class one temporary retailers.
No? Any further discussion? That's Lou and Harry. Harry and Lou, Lou and Harry. All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. Our next meeting will be, what, March? We'll get to here quick then. It will be March the third. Board, appreciate your time tonight, long meeting. Appreciate your patience and your activity, and we're good to go. So, need most to adjourn. All in favor say aye. Thank you, Jared, for being here tonight.
Who's second at that?
Jared Crane.